We're going to call this meeting to order. Appreciate everyone being here on this beautiful evening. It's been a really pretty day. I'm glad we dodged a bullet the other night on this weather that we had coming in and the Lord watching after us. Before we get started, Robert, would you lead us in the invocation, also invitation, and also the praise of the season?
We. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you with thankful hearts as always to be blessed as we are to live here and to enjoy the life that we have. And Father, we just pray tonight that you would bless those who did see some rough weather yesterday, Lord, some things that happened. We pray especially for the people of Ukraine. Lord, we just pray that you would be with those who are fleeing that country trying to find a place to get out and to get into where they can be taken care of. Those that are taken care of, and Lord, we pray for them, that they would have the means and the strength. Lord, there's some of the things that we cannot imagine. We've never gone through and we pray we never do, but we're seeing it happen on our TVs and we just pray that you would be with them. Or be with our nation, be with our leadership, because we just don't know what's coming tomorrow, but we know that you're in control of tomorrow. So bless our meeting here tonight, bless our community, our county, our city, our schools, our businesses and everything, Lord, that we have that makes this home. Just put to it your blessing. We give you the praise in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place, as I say, on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice, this meeting was given at a legal order of Dade County Central and has been posted in our hallway. At this time, I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowery?
Here.
Hartline?
Here.
Call?
Here.
Bradford?
Here.
And Chair President, do you have a call? Anyone want to come up and talk to us tonight pertaining to our work session? Welcome to come up. Audrey, will you hold your hand up?
Well, do I need to do this now?
You can. You can come up here. It's whatever you want to do. No, you come up here.
Well, it's good news.
Good.
Yeah. We're going to sponsor, we, the Bank of Dade is going to sponsor a community shred day so that people who have secure information and all that and don't have a way of getting, if you don't live out in the country and can't have a burn barrel or whatever. We're going to do that on Saturday, May the 14th, and it'll be from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00. And it is free for our community. We'll pay for it. We'll be there those hours. And we ask that people bring no more than five boxes of shred material, paper, please. And we don't mean refrigerator boxes, just normal boxes of shred paper. And we'll be glad to do that. It's with a company that guarantees the security of it and all that, so.
Will they shred on site, like a big truck?
We will be on, yes. They'll be on site down at the, at the bay, not the drive-through, but down at the grocery shopping center. And just come on down, line up, and we'll take care of that for you. Because I think these days we're finding there's a big need for something like that. So we're going to be doing that for the community at least this one time and maybe again later this year.
Okay, good. That's really.
And so we'll send out the information and everything. But again, it's going to be on Saturday, May the 14th, from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00.
Yeah. So everyone out there might not understand what you're talking about. If you've got any personal old paper, papers that you really want to get rid of, that you don't want to just throw in the garbage and go to the landfill, or you don't want to burn, if you'll take it down there, you're up to what, five boxes?
Yeah.
And they'll run it through a shredder and it'll be gone. You know, you want to worry about it and want to get any information?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you don't have to worry about it being carried off and done somewhere.
You're not going to take any tires or anything like that, just.
Well, I don't know. Maybe people don't show up with paper. We might take tires.
That's the week before.
Put them in the bottom of that box and then the papers will come off.
All right. Thank you. That's good. That's really good. We appreciate you in the Bank, Bank of Dade there. All right. Anyone else? Okay, come on in.
I kind of have an event going on too.
Do what now?
I have an event.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
As many of you know, my in-law's house burned down last Friday. My mother-in-law was, had very, very minor injuries, but my 16, my 16-month-old son had first and second degree burns to his body. So medical bills will be coming in and they need help rebuilding. And the price of lumber that's going to have, it's going to be expensive to do. So someone got in touch with me yesterday about a good fundraiser idea about doing a cruise in. And we've already reserved the Veterans Park area to be able to do it. Trying to get some vendors coming in. I've already got, I think it's 30 or 40 people so far that want to bring their cars in. Trying to get in touch with an inflatable company so the kids have something to do. And I already have one live music person that wants to come in too. So, but this will be April 23rd, two weeks from this Saturday.
On the Saturday?
Yeah. From 12:00 before. And it's a free event. We're not even charging people to bring their cars out because we're not having to pay anything either. So, and all of the funds, donations, money, gift cards, clothing, whatever people want to donate, it's all going to my in-laws and towards my son's hospital bills. So if anybody wants to come out, the event will be over here. Hopefully the weather participates, but you know, that could change.
Can you get some sizes where she can post it on her line, online?
Yeah.
Of your father-in-law, mother-in-law, you know, some of the clothes, sizes and stuff that they need?
We'll have all of that information. Like I said, we just talked about this yesterday.
Yeah.
So we've already got most of the stuff lined up for it, but we're also getting more information stuff in, businesses that want to contribute to it. We'll have that on flyers as well. But hopefully in the next, hopefully by Monday or Tuesday, we'll have some flyers made and they'll be put up. It'll all be shared on social media. So anybody that wants to come out and help support them, that'd be great.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
We'll write that down. Carrie, you kind of work with them on it too, to get it online on our website anyway, get it out there too, you know?
Yes, sir.
All right. Lamar, you want to go ahead and start, we'll start with you on the committee report, please?
Our 911 call activity report, I guess the EMS had 205 calls. The fire departments had 290. Police, which includes Trenton, Dade County, Lookout Mountain and Georgia, Lookout Mountain Drug Task Force, and Georgia State Patrol was 2,391 calls in a month for our police. So a lot of calls for a total of 2886.
Pretty busy. Pretty busy.
I mean, that's been, that's a lot, a lot of calls for police. But on our storm shelters, number one, Alex told me today that, I think he said Tri-State Electric, if I remember right. Tri-State Electric is laying the lines in the ground and getting everything ready to hook up because Georgia Power won't set the pole, run the line and hook to it until they're done. But that hopefully would be done in the next week or two. The storm shelter at Rising Farm was set last week and the interior work should begin soon. And storm shelter number three, which is at Davis, the, the work and the prep, the dirt work is scheduled to begin real soon. Hopefully this next week. Weather pending, of course, like always with construction. I rode around with Billy yesterday and we toured Murphy's Hollow Road and they've done a lot of work on that road, ready to pave. It's, I didn't get the exact footage, but it's close to a four-mile road. And that's one of our roads that when the interstate's back up, these trucks now have found the GPS, they find them roads and they're taking them down them, that hollow and if you, it's hard to imagine, but they're tickled to get the road paved. They're already worried about the speeders and the, and the trucks, but that nearly comes with everything you get. So the striping, Creek Road, where I live, Creek Road was completed probably two weeks ago. They still got to come back and put reflectors down the center line. That was something we've never had before. We're going to have now and it's really, really nice. It's curvy road and a lot of places with no shoulders for the cars. We've had cars to drive off there. And so we're looking forward to that. And we also toured Sales Lane. That's the one that we, that's going to be, both of them. Murphy's Hollow will be first, I think, Friday at 10:00. But May, May and, or June at the latest, that we'll start that.
So they may possibly go ahead and do the, you know, that, because that's right with the shop. We always like to do a short road and get the pavement and everything working before we get on a big road like that. So they probably, normally we'll probably go and make a run all the way down and do that and make sure everything's tuned up right, so, but.
Yeah, because that's, that's probably not even a half a mile.
No.
The distance is pretty close to.
They won't take, take us to that.
Murphy's Hollow. And of course, Ted was talking about the T-spots and the need for paving. I mean, everybody I've run into now that we've been, they find out that Murphy's Hollow is going to be paved. When's my road going to be paved? And I mean, and I've had, and they're big roads, tell you what some of them are. David, David Brown's not real long, but it is a good side of the road.
Cloverdale, that's one I've been on.
Hicks Hollow Road, North Sligo, Deacon Leve, they've been after us to widen and pave that road for a while. But we have to, we have to do what goes around what we can with what we have. So the T-spots would be handy. And another thing on the striping on the Creek Road, we just have two yellow lines down the center of the road and we'll have the reflectors. We don't have white lines. And I've got calls about that, said, are they going to do white lines? Well, the law says that we had to have at least 20 feet, or 20 feet of pavement before you can have white lines. And we got 18 or less in, on the Creek Road. So those are, those are stuff, you know, T-spots could help us out with widening that road to where we could have. When I was younger, I didn't realize how important them stripes were. But as I get older and it's raining, those stripes are very important, you know, to making sure you stay on the road. Got some good news and bad news about the internet. Bad news first. Murphy's Hollow was supposed to be, hopefully be constructed by midsummer. But they, they kind of said it back, and I hadn't talked to Adam Austin about it yet, but they were running the fiber optic line down Sand Mountain and somewhere near Murphy's Hollow, they, copper thieves cut it in too, looking for copper. Well, guess what? There's no copper.
Not in fiber.
In a fiber line. But that is a big setback, a big cost for the telephone company by cutting that line in too. So if anybody knows anything about it, we'd appreciate knowing about it. The Wildwood where I live, and you've heard us talk about it time after time, we have no internet. The Creek Road, Oak Creek Road, Old Birmingham Highway, we have nothing. They did get the property to build a hub, I call it, on, to where they could do a build-out for the, for Wildwood now. So that's moving forward and I'm really glad to hear about that. So that concludes mine.
Okay. Mr. Hartline?
At the sports complex, we've got wrecked baseball and soccer started. We had 21 games this week. In baseball, we had 16 games in soccer. On field four, they finished the fence. Field four is the field that's behind Stacy's shop. They, we extended that field out using the dirt that came off of County Grove Six, trying to save, we saved taxpayers money there. We've got a tournament April the 29th and 30th of this month, and we've already got 15 teams confirmed for that. Carrie's got some pictures from the other night. We got multiple pictures, Carrie, from where they had a middle school ball. And I'm assuming that's where a lot of these 21 games come from, at the ball fields. I got a phone call and they said the parking lot was completely full in the front, down the side, and there was parking on the road that goes down the side where Stacy's shop's at.
It was backed up, there's no doubt. I mean, you can see the cars there.
And this was after two games had already let out, so.
That's our flyer we've got out for the tournament this, the 29th and 30th of this month. So with us having already 15 teams, I don't see any reason that tournament will not make. As far as electrical inspections or permits this month, Stacy said we've had 44 electrical permits just in March.
Yep.
That's all I've got.
All right. What's your call?
Well, reporting on our splash intake, this, this month was down about 6,000 from last month, but it's the best March we've had in a long time. March is usually the lowest month we have and it's still 264,312. I know we mentioned T-splash here a lot tonight. Ted mentioned it in, in our workshop. Lamar just mentioned it. It is a fair way to do things. And when we look at splash and what it brings in and realizing that we can kind of get an idea of what's going to come in through T-splash to go directly to our roads, to be able to pave the roads that everybody's wanting paved. The city being able to pave everything they've got. It's going to come a time when we really can't talk about it as commissioners, but right now I urge everybody to call some of the counties that have it. Call Walker County, call, get, get ahold of some people in the state, because you can't find out who have passed these T-splashes. And there's, there's been nothing but praise from their people of what they've been able to do. And we're sitting here talking about Murphy's Hollow, some of the roads that have needed it for a long time. The legislature is finished. They've gone home for the year. The laws that were passed were passed, some failed. But I know the, and you can speak more to it, the right to farm, freedom to farm, maybe you can say something about that. That did pass. Some of the things that, that they did, the mandates, funded mandates, unfunded mandates. Some of them are funded by the state, but they'll be long-term and may not always be that way. But that has been done. I want to say one thing right quick, and this is just a good news thing, because for the last two and a half years, we've lived with COVID. COVID's still around. It's not gone. It's probably never going to go. But just to show you where things are getting, the hardest-hit industry probably in the United States or the world was the cruise industry. The CDC shut them down. You've got multi-million, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of ships that are sitting in dry dock because they couldn't go. They did, but were able to start up at the end of last year on some very limited cruises. My wife and I were able to go on a cruise last week to the Caribbean on Carnival. Once we got on, you took your mask off. It was, there was probably 3% of the people on the ship chose to wear a mask. They do not make it. They recommend it, but there was nobody except their employees that did. You were able to go back to the buffets and dip your own food, except for bacon. They do dip your bacon and they only have bacon every other day. And they've done that for, ever since the pandemic started because of the price of bacon. And it smells so good and looks so good, people fill their plate up with it when they walk off and leave half of cruise ships. Saying, you know, we need to start dipping this stuff out ourselves. So that's the only thing really that you didn't do yourself. So I'm saying that to say this, it's a, it's good news, because we're as close to back to normal right now, probably farther than we thought we would be, just simply because they've done that. So that is some good news for the United States, for the people who like to cruise, like to travel. Things are opening up in, you know, other travel. The airlines and some of the other countries are easing up. So people who like to visit and have the money and the means to do that. It's just some good news in the midst of all the bad we've had. For two years, we've lived with the bad and I just want to share a little bit of good. So we had a great time and the ship was almost to capacity, over 5,500 people plus the crew. And the crew was like everybody else. They were 200, 200 people short on crew members because they shut down so long. People didn't get back or they found other jobs in their countries. If you've ever cruised, there's very few Americans on cruise ships, except those cruising. But the crew is made up, I mean, it's just a, it's a global thing when you get on there and listen to people and where they're from. But I just wanted to share that good news because it's time we had something. Thank you.
Good. Good report. That wasn't a county trip now, was it?
It wasn't?
Mr. Bradford?
I put on your personal credit card.
You would, because I don't have one. I don't use one.
Well, I'm going to start with announcing the tire amnesty, which is Saturday, May 7th. That's coming up really quick. That's going to be eight to two. And five tires per resident. No large truck tires, tractor, trailer tires, just standard tires with trucks and motorcycles. Must be cleaned. No water in them. And hopefully the weather will be well that day for us. We had 195 road work orders, mainly just kind of catching up with, with rain and, and prepping roads to, to stripe and, and pave. I don't have recycling, because we've had some employment change there. So hopefully we'll get that rolling on Monday or so and, and have that done for next month.
Yeah. All right. Good report. I've got a few things to, to touch on. Number one is something I forgot tonight when we made the presentation. And if you've noticed these drawings on the wall, that was supposed to have been part of that, that presentation to Ms. Baker and her group. Carrie, can you, can you touch on that and tell us just, I know you, you were kind of instrumental in getting them here? And tell us a little bit about, you know, the children and how this come about?
So these are photos, or sorry, drawings done by our elementary school and middle school age kids. Sorry, I have to go to my, my school at home because they can see the picture. So. I know, usually that's me. People are.
So these, these are photos that are, pictures rather, that are drawn by our elementary school kids and our middle school kids to focus on child abuse awareness. This is Child Abuse Awareness Month, which is why most of our commissioners are wearing blue. Blue is the color to symbolize child abuse awareness. Also, the pinwheels on the square are representative, are representative of the number of children who were helped through the services, through Lookout Mountain Judicial, what is?
Drug Task.
Drug Task Force, I think. So 279 children used those services last year. And I would encourage those of you who are here to go take a look at these drawings. I'm going to get choked up because some of those, I guarantee you, were drawn by survivors of child abuse. And when you see them, you'll know which ones they are. So take a look. Those will be up here for a couple of weeks. So for those of you at home, if you want to stop by the administrative building and take a look at those, maybe your child's artwork is up here, or your grandchild, or somebody you know who goes to church with you, stop by and take a look at, take a look at this artwork done by our local kids.
Thank you. Okay. Also want to touch, touch base on, I've had some people ask some questions. We know there's going to be some bridge work take place in the next year or so here. And they'd mentioned to me, asked me about our county bridges. Well, our county bridges are inspected, it's every, I think it's every two years they come in. And the state, when I say they, they come in, they do a thorough check on all of our county bridges, bridges. And they also, they, they give us a itemized notation of any, anything that needs to be repaired or fixed. And what we've, what we've done in the last 15, 20 years, we get right on it. We, we do, we do all the, the passing, if it's anything on the approach or whatever. In fact, that's what we've been doing for the past three or four weeks. We've had a crew, I think they're at Cloverdale now, maybe finishing that up. They pumped some concrete in an, an area there that it eroded. But fortunately, our bridges in our county are really in good shape. I mean, now there's some of them don't really look like. We've got one at Cloverdale that I thought they would have turned down many years ago. I mean, it was built when the A models was going and it was only, it's only so wide. But they, they structurally go in there and they look at these bridges and, and that bridge right there, it passes every year. So, so not to worry about our county bridges right now. Everything really is good. And of course, as we, you've heard us talk, if you hadn't heard us, we, there is some issues on some, on some of the state bridges here in the county. But that's, that's in the process as we speak, so. But I just want to, I want to set everybody's mind ease on that. Talking about DOT, I don't really have a lot to report on the Sand Mountain project at fiction to start up there. They, they've had engineers in and out of here ever since our last meeting. They're coming around 136 right there, when you come from, from the Crossroads Hardware, when you come off that, that gap right there. The wall there, they've got some major issues there with, with water. And, but as soon as I know something, if there's going to be a road closure, we'll, we'll let you know. Because that's a ma- major artery. And what'll happen if they did close it to work on it, of course, as we said last, last month, that, that probably, well, the traffic will be deterred and our County Road Six will probably take care of all of it for whatever time it takes to, to fix it. Also, something like I mentioned, it's every month we've had problem, but we've got some, just in the past three or four weeks, the railroad has really gotten bad again about this blockage down here. They've had Church Street blocked for a week now, over a week. The Bank of Dade, going through the Bank of Dade, that one's blocked. They've got, and they're using that for kind of a parking lot of these, of these cars. Now, and they have had, actually Vanguard has been, has been blocked twice this past week, which they're never supposed to block it. And when that happened, for those of you that don't live here in Trenton or Trailways, we had, we had tractor trailers backed up on both sides of the road, trying to get in, trying to get out for hours, you know? And it's, we've also got an issue not only with the city here, but up on Steel Road. Had a call there and I got pictures here the day before yesterday because they document it, I do. That's a one-way in, one-way out. There's about 20 families living there. They were, they were kind of separated from the world for about four and a half hours the other day. Couldn't get in, couldn't get out. And fortunately, fortunately, this time they moved right when school, the school bus started to run. Now, a month or so ago, they did it and we, we had two kids being crossed through the train to get home. So we've got it, we've got to do something. I've talked to Connor Poe, I actually have called him twice since the day before yesterday. He's our government liaison with Norfolk Southern. He's in Atlanta. He hadn't called me back. He usually always calls me back, I mean, within 15, 20 minutes. And I called him less than an hour ago, an hour before this meeting, because I'd like to have something from him to pass on to our people to say, you know, what are they doing? Because if we're going to mess around, there's going to be someone that have a heart attack or cardiac over there on that side of the track, especially on these roads. Clark Street, it was blocked. It's been blocked many times. That's where Vanda lives and there's several houses down there. That's one way in, one way out. And, and so it's, we're going to mess around, we're going to have a really bad situation. And it's, we're doing everything we can as a government, but they are, if you really look at, they're their own government. They've got their own police and all, and so they're pretty independent. But hopefully in the next week or so, by this time next week, we'll have some kind of answer. And I know there's a lot of mad people out there right now. I know that about it. The, Lamar covered on our storm shelters. We're, we're really glad that that's clicking along. I did mention that they are going to, going to start next week out there on Davis and try to get that, get that dirt work down and get it clipped down. And so things are really looking good. This one here, this one down at the full fields, I hope, you know, if you, if we really look at what they, what they're doing, what they've done, I hope in the next, say, 14 days, 10, 14 days, that one will be up and we'll be, we'll say, okay, it's open. Rising Farm, we've got to put a safety tank fill line in. There's a little bit more to it than, than there. They're, they're actually hooking the sewer down here. We don't have sewer in Rising Farm. But I'd say between two and three weeks on it, because we've got, we've got people working on it too. I had several calls on both of them yesterday, or when we had, when the first alerts started going out, when they were talking about it. And so I got a feeling they're really going to be used. They, you know, it's, it's something that, especially people that, that live in modular or mobile homes, you know, that whether it's a brand-new home or not, it's just going to, it'll give them a good feeling, or if you live in any town, it'll give you a good feeling to know that you do have a place to go. When those alarms go off and those sirens, you know, whether you, and it's up to you. You don't have to use them, but at least you, you've got that option. And these are real safe. They'll hold less, just a little less than 300 people, 268 or something like that. So we're, we're looking forward to getting these things up and running, because as bad as I had to say it, it's that time of year, you know? And it, I had butterflies all day yesterday in my stomach, you know? I mean, just, you know, you just did not know exactly, you know, what, what was going to, whether it was going to go north or south. But, but anyway, we've got that going our way. We did have a. We did have a, I attended our health board meeting, as Alex is on it also. And we discussed several things. But one thing that they're actually, wants to actually spread through the community is, if you are on a septic tank, you know, you're having problems, you know, regardless, you know, leakage or whatever, there is money out there to help you right now. And it's, you know, it's a program the federal government have joined with the state. And you can come in the office in here. Steven, he's in our soil conservation person. It's handled through that office. And I'm not sure, I think they can pay up to like seventy-five percent of the repair.
It's forty.
Is it forty?
Forty percent. They were, they were just doing up to, but they are doing forty percent.
Four forty percent.
And I have used it, so.
Oh, really?
Yes, and it is very easy. It's, they sign you up, you get a quote, an official quote, it's wonderful.
Okay, that's good. So, they will pay for forty percent?
Forty percent.
Okay.
And it was, fill out the paperwork, and a week later, the check was in the mail.
That's good, that's good. And as most of you know, in the unincorporated part of the county, which is the main part of our county, we're on septic tanks, septic tank fill line. And so, only Trenton and just a little bit of the perimeter here. But so, let's keep that in mind, everyone.
Yeah, it's a pretty wonderful thing.
And if you've got questions, you can call me, I've got, keep it with, and also the commission office, six five seven four six two five. And Carrie, you've got it posted too, right?
Yes, I do.
What's that under? Is it under our, like, Dade County Commission, or is it under like the NRCS?
It's on our very front page, on our website.
Okay.
And I'm sure most, anybody that you're using, if you're using somebody that deals with septic tanks, they have the information to.
Local people.
Yeah, the local people have the.
Yeah. But I just wanted to share that with you. The only other thing I wanted to mention is the joint comprehensive plan, and we did talk a little bit about that. But if you've not went online and actually filled that out, try to do that, because it really is pretty interesting. You've got, you know, sixteen questions or so. But that's what, that's what things, that's what our future is based on. We go by these things, you know, the five-year plan, twenty, thirty-year plan. And so, you know, don't be bashful, go on, it's real easy. And it all goes in, because it does count. You might say, well, it don't make any, it does make a difference, you know? So, try to do that if you can. And there again, that's on, Carrie's got that, where you can go online and do that. Have y'all got anything else you wanna bring up before we go on?
That that you was just talking about, about septic, you talking about the Limestone Valley?
Limestone Valley.
On that, the only thing that you need to know is it's, if you drain to Lookout Creek, part of Sand Mountain on the Bluff Side, you can qualify for it. But if you live on a watershed that goes away from Lookout Creek, you can't, you can't apply for it. So, you have to call and just let them know, give them your address, and they'll let you know if you're on the right watershed or not.
Well, where does that break in? I mean, 'cause most of it would come this way. The only other thing it would do, we'd go toward Tennessee River, so it'd have to be out there about Heartline Road.
No, right on the Bluff, it starts and then it goes out. Goes into Alabama through County Road eighty-nine.
I didn't know that. I mean, I really, you know. But ninety percent of Lookout, ninety-nine percent of Lookout, yeah, I mean, it is. I mean, the only part that doesn't is on the out, we've got one little area, Head River. There were a little river, the east for whatever they call it, but it goes and goes toward the other valley over there. But that's, but it, either way, I mean, it's good, that's good information.
And this is where it can be done on the Bluff Side, it's on the home page.
Okay. Alright, alright, let's move on to our appearances. Mindy, he's our manager of our Dade County Public Library. Hey, what?
Thank you for having me again. I do appreciate being able to come once a month and share what's going on at the library. So, before I get to what I sent over to Carrie, I just wanted to mention, the library is also in partnership for the Child Abuse Awareness Project, and this is actually in our contest. There were five projects that were selected that are hanging up at the library. So, in addition to these, if the community comes and wants to look at these, they can walk on over to the library. We actually have a contest. And those projects are on our wall, and you can vote for your favorite one, and the winner will be recognized. And so, we encourage everybody to have a look at those. Second, I heard it right as I went to, use the restroom. Yes, the library has paper copies of the survey, the community survey. Ms. Donna Street dropped them off for me, with me today. So, we have the scan code, and we also have paper copies for anybody. And I don't know if it was mentioned before, but she said, maybe have you filled that out? And I was like, well, you know, I don't live in Dade County. She's like, oh, but you work there. So, I don't know if everybody's aware, but even if you work in Dade County, you should fill out one of those surveys. Am I right on that?
Yes, you're right.
Okay. So, yeah, we've got those surveys, just come ask us at the counter, and we'll get you one of those. And now, we'll move on to the library business. This is our calendar for April. And I don't know if you can see over there on the right, but there's eleven programs that we've got in the month of April. We have so much going on, it's really exciting. I'm not gonna mention each and every one, because I'm gonna try to be quick tonight. But I encourage you to go to the CHRL website, our calendar is on there. We have paper calendars at the library, you can come get one. We always have everything posted around the library. We have eleven events in April. And one thing that we're really proud of, our new guest, Spencer, he has programmed something every week for every age group. So, that's really exciting as well. So, every week, there's something for every age group, from preschoolers to elementary school to teen. And we have a lot of activity in the library. If you have come during any of our programs, you've seen we have a lot of activity happening. The other thing I wanna mention, this is not on our calendar, but we have been working with the schools, and we have four school visits planned for April. Our first school visit was last Friday, our next school visit is tomorrow. So, I have some pictures of some of our middle school and high school students that came. And we read a book, we had a craft, they got a tour of the library, they got a behind-the-scenes where we get the books from the other libraries around Pines. It was a great day at the library. So, next, the pop-up job fair. Alliance for Dade put on a job fair at the high school, and we were privileged to be able to have a, our Spencer, who is also our youth education coordinator, he's our pop-up coordinator as well. He had a pop-up library at the job fair, and he had so many young people interested in coming over and talking to us, not just about, hey, there's some job opportunities, would you like to work at the library? We have a lot of really incredible online resources for young folks looking for employment. We have cover letter and resume templates that they can use, that helps them with their wording when they're trying to apply for jobs. We've got various practice tests for the electrician's exam, getting into college, getting into nursing school, all sorts of exams on some of our online platforms, it's free with a library card. So, that's Spencer. We have two partnerships that I wanted to highlight. One of those was with the Cub Scouts. The Cub Scouts came in and presented a program on fishing. We had, let's see, my notes here, we had fifteen participants, but we had thirty people total come and do. They had set up different stations, they talked about local fish in the area, they had practice casting, and they talked about trips that kids can go on to practice their fishing. So, that was a lot of fun. And we had our 4H Miss Cunningham came and did an incredible program on archaeology. We had twenty-nine participants, which was, I mean, blew us all away. Twenty-nine participants that were children, but we had a total of forty-seven people come to the library and participate with this event. And she did an incredible job. You can see some of the pictures of, our meeting room was two-capacity. She did a cookie excavation that obviously had everybody, you know, engaged and activated throughout the program. So, they're gonna, if you looked at the, they were on our calendar. She's gonna be doing a teen program in anthropology later this month. And she's coming back in May to do two programs, another children's program and another teen program in May. Also, what was not on our calendar were the extra community events that we have going on, the school visits. We have four of them. We've got a book signing, we have a local author who just published a book. Mr. Ken Pennington is going to be signing his book and doing a book reading on the Rockeaters. That's April twelfth. The IDA is gonna be using our meeting room on the eighteenth. We have two board meetings, not only the Dade County Board Meeting, but the Regional Library Board Meeting is gonna be at our facility this month. And newly minted, the election debates will be held at the library on the twenty-sixth. So, I think, from what I've heard, that has always happened there, and it's a big event, it's televised. So, they're gonna be set up in the library again on the twenty-sixth. Alright. Oh, there's our author, Ken Pennington, The Rockeaters. He has a little bio up there. So, please, come, support our local author. Buy a book, get it signed, and listen to him tell a little bit about his history, and he's gonna do a little read in front of the book. I'm so excited about this, y'all, this is our teen room renovation. And there's Jared and one of the trustees, they did an amazing job, they were in and out, they cleaned up. It was amazing. What they did is they took out a countertop that was not really being utilized, and they lifted the lights, they cleaned it up, they painted it that blue. We're gonna be adding two more ranges for books. And those ranges are being painted for us at LeFet, and they will be installed hopefully by the end of this month. And the reason we need two more ranges, let's go to the next slide, is books. One of the things I was tasked with when I came on board is making sure we are committed to buying books every month to add to our library. And what we noticed in our teen room, even after we did our weed, is we just didn't have room for any more books, and we definitely want more teen books in there. So, the great news is, the state increased our per capita money from forty cents to sixty cents. So, that's gonna give us an extra three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars this year to purchase books. That's amazing, I'm really excited about that. We also have some state tech money that we were awarded, and I just put a few of the things that we're thinking of, proposing. We have to have that in on the fifteenth, it goes to the region to approve. But we've got iPad station for the children's area, we've got a new Windows PC, and a swivel monitor for the history room, Nintendo Switch accessories for our Pokemon club, which is one of our new teen children activities. And we're potentially looking at a new 3D printer. Ours was one of the first, we were, you know, one of the stalwarts for that, but it's a little outdated, and we're having trouble actually getting it to finish the project, so we've had a few patrons asking us to do. So, we're looking at purchasing a new one of those with that money, and some STEM and robotic activity kits are all on our wishlist. Last but not least, we have two job openings at the library. Longtime library assistant, April resigned. Last week was her, last Thursday was her last day, and she was an asset to me. She helped me so much as I transitioned into this role. And she decided, after twenty-seven years at the library, she was looking for a change. So, she has moved on, and we are looking to fill our lead serp position. So, if you know anyone, the applications are online, they can also pick one up at the library. It'll be a part-time, twenty-nine hour per week. Because it is a lead serp position, the hourly rate is eleven dollars per hour. And we already have probably five or six applicants, which is exciting. It's nice to be able to, you know, have a good choice when you're sitting down to interview. We'll probably be interviewing by the end of the month, and hopefully have someone in here first to second week of May. And our second position is Spencer, our youth education coordinator, would like a spring/summer marketing intern. And he would love, he has to be a high school sophomore, junior, senior from Dade County High School. And he wants somebody who's interested in marketing as a career. They've gotta have three-point-oh GPA, and he's gonna really, this isn't a fluffing stuff, oh, just come and sit around the library. He really wants to put them to work, and he has got some great ideas on marketing, social media. He would be a great person to work under. So, if you are interested, any of you teens, interested in coming to work at the library as a marketing intern, you can find the full job description on the Facebook page, you can send your cover letter and resume to Spencer's email address, address, spinnington@chrl.org. Alright, I think that's it. That's it for the library, thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, good job, good report.
Alright, well, thanks again, I appreciate it.
Alright. Alright, Ms. Sarah Dyer and Laura Betten Cunningham.
Well, we had a really big month of March, so we have lots of things to tell you guys. Here is the March newsletter, I gave you guys a copy of that last month, and then I've supplied you with the April newsletter, so you know what's going on. We've had quite a few people sign up for camp this year, and not just like Cloverleaf Camp, but, you know, our Senior Extreme Camp and things like that, so we haven't really had that much in the past. Earlier in the year, I applied for some camp scholarships through various 4H foundations and grant programs. And I received four fully-paid scholarships for Cloverleaf Camp at Rock Eagle that had been awarded to two boys and two girls from the DFACS program. I partnered with Martha Baker and Family First Connections, and she helped me identify those kids. And they are super excited because they've never been out of the county, they've never done anything. So, I'm really happy that I was able to do that for them. We also had two other scholarships that are going to a family that are able to send two of their boys to camp. So, back in the beginning of March, I took three Dade County 4Hers to Rock Eagle for district project achievement, and I brought back three first-place winners. Braxton Wood, he placed first in the lamb and meat goat category, Liam Davison, first in forestry and wood science. And his twin sister, Kerrigan Davison, she placed first in environmental science. And I was really proud of them, they worked really hard, they came to a session two and three times a week, they had dress rehearsals. And it's always good to see when hard work actually pays off, so they were really excited. Craft night was a lot of fun as usual, with lots of messy hands and smiling faces, that's when they painted the old things. And surprisingly, it wasn't that messy, and they had a few time. Craft night for April is actually tomorrow night, and we're gonna make squid out of toilet paper.
That'll be interesting.
Yes, it will be. Movie night this last month was my most successful so far. We had about four to five families show up to watch Home on the Range. And this month, we're gonna be watching Chicken Little, and that's not tomorrow, but the following Friday. We also kicked off our registration for our annual Chick to Chicken Project. We had thirteen students register this time, many of them first-time participants, and new families that have recently moved into Dade County. We tried to pick a more unique chicken this time to see if it would attract more kids to participate, I think it did. We chose this blue star hen, which is very beautiful, and they're big and fluffy, and they're supposed to be, they call them like a gentle giant, so I really think the kids are gonna enjoy them, and they'll obviously be more pets than laying hens. But I'm excited about them, because I'm getting something.
And we will remind you when it's time in November for that chicken show and sale, because we'd love for you guys to come out and support the kids as they present their three best hens to the judge. And then you'll have the opportunity to buy those hens, or a couple of them from each kid if you want to, and take them home. And they'll be ready to lay by December, Christmas time for some eggs. So, we're very excited to kick that off, we'll do some summer programs as well for those kids. And we have had, like Laura just mentioned, as you guys have mentioned, lots of people moving to the area. We're seeing new, brand-new families coming from out of state that have moved here, that are taking advantage of the opportunities we offer in 4H. So, we're glad to welcome them, and we are really excited they're diving headfirst into these programs. So, on the, it's not on the screen, before we get to the ad part of, or excuse me, the adult ad program inside of things, we also hosted our livestock showing interest meeting the last day in March, right before we submitted this presentation on Friday morning. So, that's not on here, but we had the biggest turnout we've also had yet in that program, which is really neat. I'd say we had about eight or nine families there, so we're expecting a few new livestock show team members this year. So, if you've been around for a little while, you've heard me talk about the Dade Grass Class. Dade stands for Dade Agriculture Developing Excellence. We're kicking off a new series as the grass class wraps up in May, we're starting the Greater Gardener series. So, this is for any and all that wanna join us, it is twenty-five dollars per person, and I do need you to come in advance to that first night, so that we can have everything ready for you. So, Friday, April twenty-second, if you're watching at home, is the deadline to come by our ag center and get signed up for this program. So, then the following Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, you can join us for the first night. That first night, we will have our UGA Extension Home Garden Vegetable Specialist up here from Griffin. He will be here to do that presentation, and I'll bring in different gardening experts from UGA Extension throughout the twelve-month program. So, we're really excited to kick this one off, we can move on to the next one. Thank you. The Beekeepers will be meeting at our ag center in April, April eighteenth, they always meet the third Monday of the month. And then, our Catalans Association is rotating back to Walker County this upcoming month. So, on Tuesday, April nineteenth, we'll be in Walker County. We just secured that program topic and speaker today, so we will have Dr. Lou Strickland, who is the Extension Veterinarian for the.
for the University of Tennessee, come down for our Vaccine 101 program. So I'm hoping when we promote this on social media, you know, they understand it's a cattle vaccine protocol, not COVID. So this is all cattle-focused. Little change in pace for some of our vaccine information. And then we are wrapping up that grass class series. Like I just mentioned, our final meeting will be Monday, May second. If you have not been coming, fill in, because I know you've been real busy. Join us that night. We're gonna have dinner for that program and a question-and-answer session with all of our previous program speakers. So it'll be a really good wrap-up for the folks that have been registered and following along that program for the last two years. So that's all we got. And give us a call if you have any questions, needing help. Now is the time to be thinking about your vegetable garden. So soil testing, water and rain testing, we offer all of that through our office.
Any questions, comment? Good report, good job. I appreciate y'all.
I have a question. How do you, how do you register for the gardening series?
You do have to stop by, because we can only take cash or check within our office. So you stop by the office to make payment and fill out a form, and then you just show up on Tuesday, Wednesday. And if you just show up, a ring is ringing that's not registered the night of the twenty-sixth, we can issue you registration.
So stop by the office with your cash or check, and you'll get registered before the joint sec.
I'd be delighted. Thank you.
Mr. George Williams.
Hello, from here. Thank you for having me.
George, I was gonna really talk about the event that we had over the last together, but I thought, I'm not gonna say a word about it unless you have all the glory now. And then, guess who? So if I'd known that, I would've opened up about it, but no. Go ahead, George. Yeah, yeah. And you did.
That was a good lead-in.
It was, yeah.
It was a good lead-in. Well, we're at a hundred and five investors. We're continuing to do our renewals. Remember, we've been in business for a year now, so we're starting to. And the renewals are going really well. We have a few that have dropped off and we're following up on, but I'm really pleased with where we're at with the renewals. Career fair at the high school, just Ted, you were there. Lamar, you were there. Robert, you were there. I think it was a wonderful event. Josh was well-pleased. We had thirty-five companies or organizations represented there. We had an audience captive with the senior class. We had a few juniors in there, and we learned something from that. There's a few juniors said, hey, we would like to be included next year. So we're already beginning to plan our second year to do that, and we will invite the junior class as well, so that they have a year to prepare for that. We had great comments from the companies. Our students were respectful, they had good questions, they presented themselves well. So I think they were well-pleased as well. We just introduced a new investor benefit, and I've talked about this a little bit in the past, but it's called Drugs Don't Work. It's an opportunity for companies to be certified and put a drug program together in their companies where they can save up to seven and a half percent on their worker comp expense. That goes along with other programs that we have. They're not tied together. But we have a 401K program for our investors as well, as well as health insurance opportunities for those who invest in the Alliance for Dade. We're still doing our Alliance Lives. We get constant feedback about that. I think this past week, we had Servpro. And thank you for your support of putting me on the IDA. I think it's important that the Alliance plays a role on that, because you've asked us to get into economic development, and we're certainly gonna do every bit of that that we can. The next slide is the Welcome Center. And by the way, we are doing the comprehensive study. We have the blanks at the forms at the Welcome Center. We had a half a dozen people or so come in there, pick up the forms, and then bring them back to us. The QR code's also posted there if you wanna do it online as well. So stop by the Welcome Center. As you can see, we're starting to trend up a little bit on visitor numbers. This is a little bit of a busy chart here, but it's, you know, the weather's starting to get better, we're starting to see spring breaks, that kind of thing. So we're starting to see that activity pick up at the Welcome Center. We're pleased about that. Next slide is coming soon. We have a Lunch and Learn scheduled for May the fifth, which will be our legislative update. And we have Jeff Mullis, our Senator, and Mike Cameron, our representative, that are gonna be there and tell us about what took place in Atlanta in this last session. So bring our folks up to date. We've also have launched a website, because we took over this from US 11 Antique Alley. And we just launched a website, and we're actually actively going out and talking with chambers. In fact, one of the chambers in Alabama, I can't remember which one it was, agreed to sign up. They're gonna be part of that. And we're already beginning to post our businesses in the Dade County area. It'll be part of that. And I know Stacy, if you're still here, I don't see him, he left. I know that we're gonna be doing some things at the sports complex, have some space available down there as well, and we'd certainly make sure we advertise that as well. That's my report for this month. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? George.
What time does the Lunch and Learn legislative update?
We're gonna do that from probably eleven-thirty to one. There'll be more information coming out, but it'll be eleven-thirty to one, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you, George.
Hey, thank you very much.
Appreciate all you do.
Yes, thank you.
Rodney Ross, you got anything you wanna tell us? Anything going on with the fire departments? We have Rodney here, he's at every meeting, and he's our liaison of the chiefs there. They have their own little association. And if you got anything that you need to maybe bring us up to date on, or?
The whole thing is the airbag that the Perkish was supposed to be here around eight days of this month.
When is the fish fry y'all have? I know I'm way off probably months, but I know that, you know, it slips up on you. But when do y'all do that? Are you still doing it? I know COVID kinda...
Well, I'm gonna one, very quick, we're gonna be doing fireworks again this year.
That's great. That's good news. That's another sign we're getting back to normal. Rodney, which is kinda, he's one of the people that's over that out of New Salem Fireworks there right now. And you say it's pretty well like ninety percent, ninety-nine percent? Y'all gonna do it? We are gonna do it. So that, you heard it first here tonight. And that's a big event, and it's one of the largest events we have in the county. And I missed it. I know, I know all of us have. So that's really good news. We appreciate it. And also, that fish fry that I'm talking about, some of you have never heard of it, never been there. But let me tell you something, that's some of the good fishers you'll ever eat. It's really good to have it on a, like a Friday in the evening. And be sure to put that on our website too when you're gonna have it, because it's a good, a good event, a good evening to be there. And I also noticed the sign, I've missed it. I usually go up there, they're having a fish fry night every Friday night at the Catholic Church there in New England. And I'm not sure what time, but it's talk... You got it on, is it on the website? Okay. Yeah. And I just, you know, usually we go at least a couple times. That's good fish, it's good.
This is the last Friday.
Yeah, it's the last Friday?
I think so, yes.
Okay. They do that if you're during Atlanta.
And all proceeds go to local charities.
Okay, good. Very good, very good. Okay. All right, we appreciate it. Appreciate it. Okay. Do what, Melissa?
The fish, guys, you know how to cook the fish.
No, I know. Okay, let's move down to, let's move down to our monthly financial report. Donna Straits not here tonight. She did come to our comprehensive planning meeting today, but she's trying to take it easy. She's been kind of under the weather, and so she'll be back here in another month or so and start giving her report. But Donna, let's go ahead and move down to our monthly financial report, if you would.
All right. As of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, the general fund had a balance of two million, five hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars. We had on hand an investment, one million, three hundred thousand dollars, for a total of three million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars available in the general fund. Federal Asset Fund, US Treasury, has a balance of zero. Sheriff's Special Fund, a balance of ten thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. Drug Abuse Education Fund, thirty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars. Victim Assistance Fund, nine hundred forty-seven dollars. Jail Fund, eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Federal Asset Fund Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan, one million, four hundred six thousand, eight hundred three dollars. Accommodations Hotel Motel Tax is two hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred forty dollars. Employees' Flexible Spending Account has a balance of twenty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars. And the Payroll Account has a balance of ninety thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars. In the old SPOLOST remaining, the two thousand fifteen SPOLOST, the Projects Account has a balance of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred seventy dollars. And the Debt Services Account has a balance of four dollars. Two thousand twenty-one SPOLOST Fund has a project balance of eight thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. And the Proceeds Account has a balance of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars. The next page, we have the Dade County Income Statement. As of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the current month, for the current month of February, we brought in one million, forty-one thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars. We had budgeted six hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred eight dollars. So we were in excess of four hundred ten thousand, four hundred eight dollars. For the year-to-date, we have brought in ten million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars, at budgeted nine million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars. So we were, again, in excess of funds of seven hundred twelve thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars. Expenses for the month came in at eight hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars. We had budgeted nine hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars. So we were under budget eighty-three thousand dollars. Year-to-date, we've spent eight million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred eight dollars. We had budgeted eight million, six hundred sixty-one thousand. So we were under budget for the year so far at three hundred two thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars. Budget attained so far, with about two-thirds of the year gone, sixty-six point six seven percent. Revenues attained thus far were seventy-nine point four one percent. Expenses attained were at sixty-three point five nine percent. Local Option Sales Tax for the month came in at two hundred eleven thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. And special purpose local option sales tax collections came in at two hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and forty-three cents. So far in the new SPOLOST, we have spent a total of one million, eighty-six thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars. The line share of that was on the Public Works paving back in November. And the old SPOLOST, the two thousand fifteen SPOLOST, funds remaining there is still tied to the seven fire departments. So we're, they're aware of that. They are working on coming up with a plan to expense those funds soon. I think they had a meeting this past Monday night about that. And the Dade County Tax Commissioner's Office Year-to-Day Collection has been, is four million, five hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred four dollars. And that's right at eighty-seven point zero four percent. That's from July through February twenty-eighth. That concludes the report. I would like to say, we have prepared the budget documentation for the worksheets. That's a very lengthy process, but we'll be starting that process probably next week. Lisa Eubanks has already sent me her request. I asked for them, she was the first to get it, so I give her kudos for that. And so we'll be getting, you know, about fifty different budgets underway, and hopefully by the last week of April, weather permitting. After the storms the other night, it makes me nervous. But anyway, we'll have a budget prepared and something presented perhaps at the May meeting. Usually it's mid-May before we work out the final glitches on the budget. And, but the state is finally approving the state budget, so it kinda gives us guidance as to where to go with our budget. That concludes the report.
Okay. Any questions, Mr.? All right. If we don't have any questions, I will entertain a motion to approve our financial report. It's presented by Dawn Townsend. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is read.
Okay, they have a second.
Second.
Okay, got a second. Call vote, Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Hartline?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Have a motion to pass. Robin, you got anything this week?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Legal matters that we need to know about? No unfinished business? I will, under, we'll call it new business or whatever, but under the, on the North Dade School Land Swat, we do have that going. Robin, I don't know how close we are right now as far, but it's getting, probably by next month, maybe we'll be able to, I know we've gotta have, didn't you say we had to have a public meeting?
We need a public hearing before we get...
Public hearing, yeah.
And we're looking at the end of the month, in April, and I'll get y'all the date.
Okay, we'll bring it up to date, bring it up to date on that through our website. And so we'll do that, and we'll scoob board and be here and have, you know, address any comments that's made. But that'll be a good thing, be a win-win for all of us on that, so. All right. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place at the same time, first Thursday every month. I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. The reading of the minutes of this last month, our last month's regular meeting and any special call meetings will not be required, since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. The minutes are filled at record and available for review in our county commission office. The minutes are included in the consent agenda. At this time, Mr. Townsend, if you'd go over a consent agenda, we will entertain a motion pertaining to that.
We have approval of the agenda as presented. The approval of the previous meeting minutes, the revenues, I'm sorry, the review of the personnel status report is presented. Resolution R-21-22. Appointed a member to the Industrial Development Authority to fulfill the unexpired term, Mr. Peter Stravelli. And that is Lisa Cabel for a period from April seventh through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And that's the current term. Resolution R-27-22. Appointment of a member to the Industrial Development Authority to fulfill the unexpired term of Mr. Larry Case. That's Mr. George Williams. Again, April seventh, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Resolution R-28-22. A reappointment of Donna Straits to the Dade County Library Board of Trustees. It's a three-year term commencing July first, two thousand twenty-two, expiring June thirty, two thousand twenty-five. Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month of April, two thousand twenty-two. Proclamation for Confederate History Month of Remembrance for Dade County Camp for the month of April, two thousand twenty-two. Proclamation Recognition of National Arbor Day by Tree City USA, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Proclamation Recognition of National Donate Life Month, April twenty-second, April, two thousand twenty-two. We have under Historic Courthouse Restoration Project as proposed by Mr. Jamie Blevins, who's CMA of the BCM Incorporated. Under, let's see, Request for Proposal Number 2022-08 for Mechanical, which is the H Heating and Air Conditioning, is awarded to Reeves Heating and Air for a total of one hundred sixty-nine thousand, twenty-eight dollars. RFP two thousand twenty-two dash zero five. RFP two thousand twenty-two dash zero five is for the Plumbing, is awarded to Tri-State Enterprise. It's forty-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars. RFP two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine for the Electrical is awarded to Lawson Electric for one hundred twenty-three thousand, eighty-five dollars. And then we have under Approval for ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Funds. The RFP two thousand two-two dash zero one is the purchase and installation of a new generator at the Justice Building. And that is for Stowers Machinery Corporation. The cost of the generator is seventy-six thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars. Manufactured...
Uh, the cost of the generator is seventy-six thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars, manufacturer is Caterpillar. And the cost of the automatic transfer switch is twenty thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars. Manufacturer is ASLO or AL, ASCO, I don't know. Anyway, St, uh, for a total of ninety-six thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars. And we have ordinance number zero five dash zero five dash twenty-two. The Second Amendment ordinance prohibiting use of county resources to enforce gun restrictions or gun accessory laws in violation of state laws. It's a first reading only. And then two thousand twenty-two internet, intergovernmental agreement. Uh, this is, as amended from last month's version, the version two, uh, for the Board of Education, schools use of sports, county sports complex, uh, for Dade Middle School softball. And that's, that completes the reading.
Mr. Hartline's got a question here too, if you brought it up here, on, under the, um, approval of the, uh, of the generator and it's a just a feeling, you know? This guy down here, RFP twenty twenty-two dash zero one, um, purchase and installation of new generator. Now, is that purchase and installation?
Yes.
Yes.
Stowers is, oh, named for both. The manufact, I don't know, I guess the manufacturer of the transfer switch is twenty thousand, one seventy-four. And the actual manufacturer of the generator is Caterpillar for seventy-six, one sixty-three, but the total is ninety-six thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Well, the purchase and installation.
Just to purchase it, correct? Not installation?
That's installation too, cause remember he said.
It could be installation.
The one didn't want to get until they, until they actually fired it up.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's why it's presented, I mean, it's purchase, we just wanna be sure.
Well, that first base, they'd included to start up and test.
Yeah, so it'd have to be installed and started.
Yeah.
All right, that's good. Any other questions? Comments? No, they're gonna entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Mr. Townsend. They have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, call a vote, Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Hartline?
Yes.
Tagal?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Chair of the chair, motion carries.
Okay, we don't need an executive session tonight. Y'all got anything else you wanna bring before the?
Board before we adjourn?
Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Why don't you do adjourn?
All right, I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lowery, call a vote?
Yes.
Hartline?
Yes.
Tagal?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Chair of the chair, thank all of you for being here. Thank you, thank you.